He was handed the new code that says unofficial new code.
Well, my understanding from what Ms. Legge just said, just for the record in case nobody heard that, was at the hearing she handed them a new code because going forward that's what they're gonna have to deal with, but it was made clear that the hearing was under the old code.
Okay, that's all I have to announce.
But I wasn't there, so...But Mr. Salum may be able to answer the question that Mr. Tatario has on the floor, and that is, what did you or your client do when you got the notice of hearing to ask questions about the details of the violations and the circumstances?
Well, part of the issue was we didn't have enough time. The...Merrick had come to see us and we were trying to figure out what was going on. We were not getting a whole lot of information. We made some informal requests. Obviously, this is not a formal, we can send out discovery and interrogatories and depositions. We made an informal request. Merrick did, obviously, because the more we worked, we did, the more he got, had to get paid, he got charged. So Merrick made some requests, but I don't think anything was forthcoming. We never received anything. There was nothing at the hearing. We sat down and, as Clay alluded to, we were just handed the summons, the notice that we got that we'd already been served with, and said, "You have nine violations." And actually, if you look at the notice of suspension, it says eight violations, not nine. We were...And that was it. That was all that they said they had to prove. And there was no way we could defend that. We don't know who those people were. We asked who those people were, when, where were they? We had no information. We don't even know if...We don't even know if the citations that were issued resulted in convictions, just like a speeding ticket. A citation is just a summons to appear in court. It's not an admission or acknowledgement of guilt. It's just simply a ticket saying, "You need to go to court and tell the judge your story." So we never even...We don't even know what those decisions are. And we have no way of knowing what those decisions are, because first, we don't know who the people are, and then secondly, there's no way for us feasibly to follow all eight or nine of these citations at any given time to see what's happening. They may still be pending.
We don't have any names. Couldn't follow them if we wanted to. We don't even know what to ask for, because you can't even follow a name if you wanted to. If I wanted to find out, did Susie Smith plead guilty, or did she say somebody else gave her the alcohol, which would be pretty important, we don't even get the names of anyone involved.
Now, if...
To make a public record, you follow what I'm saying? To even go to the courthouse or make a public records request? We don't have the names to even ask. Like, for example, sometimes you get a police report number, right? Like, you don't even get like a number. Like, there's not even like a citation number to say like, "Okay, what did Officer Smith do that night?" Or, do you understand what I'm saying? There's not enough information, other than a day, to even make the proper request.
A few questions. Sally, if someone...I know for the city...
You wanna call up? She's gonna have to come up.
Oh, yeah. Please, Sally. That way we can hear you. I know for the city, if someone contacts me for a public records request, we have X amount of days to give them the information. For something like, in your role, if this was to happen again, if Liz Ebert owned Liz Ebert's Bar, I know that's not very original, and I am in marketing, I'll come up with a better name when I open, but do you have X amount of days to provide Liz Ebert with that information to prove that it was these people on this day doing this and these...
If the information would have been requested, it would have been given to them.
Okay, so it sounds like it wasn't requested.
That is correct.
And you mentioned, Paul, that on these two offenses, it was X amount of bars, and it was two bars each time that were offenders, and this bar was one of those two bars both times. I don't know if you happen to have it on you. Is this bar a repeat offender for something like this, for underage drinkers, or non-underage drinkers, having in hand? Is this a repeat offender? Would you have how many times?
You're speaking of Grant Street?
Yeah.
Or, well, this was their second offense. At this time, this was the second offense.
Okay, ever? Or like, you don't...
The...Mr. Merrick just recently purchased the business, so he's had it...I can't give an exact date, but a little over a year.
A little over a year, so twice in a year.
As of the date of the...
Yeah, okay.
As of that date, correct.
Okay.
As of, I think it was May 20th.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Coop?
Yes, Sally, I have a question for you.
Where?
Sorry. Okay, the certified mail letters that went out to Mr. Kopiecheck about, and that were not, were sent to the wrong address, you would normally have gotten a receipt if they would have been received by him, but...So did you...
Correct. They were returned. We don't always get them back in a timely manner from the post office. What the reason we knew that they were, went to the wrong address was because the person that lived at the address which received it contacted our office to let us know that they received a letter, two letters actually, that did not belong to them. And when it was ascertained that it belonged to Grant Street, we contacted him to let him know we have a...And it was not myself that contacted him, it was Mona who handles it, that wanting to verify what his mailing address was. The mailing address that we had, one of them was 206 and the other one is 200. I don't know or remember which one was which, so it was sent to the wrong one. But it was the address that was put on the application that we received. Also, when the permit was renewed for 2017, the address that we had on file as the mailing address was written on the renewal form, and he has to verify, read over and verify all of that information for which he did sign off and say that this is the correct information.
Okay. So by the time you actually got a hold of him, so you say you called, correct? When the mail came back, then you placed a phone call, or...
Well, we did it before we actually got it back.
Okay.
Once we got the phone call from the neighbor, we made the phone call immediately to find out about it. When he came in and actually picked up the hand-delivered copies, we still had not received the other ones back yet.
Okay. And what timeframe were we looking at in terms of before the hearing? How many...Are we within the 25 days before the hearing, or no?
No, it was...The notice was sent out before 25 days.
Right, right, but by the time...
The receipt of it was about two and a half to three weeks before the hearing.
Okay.
And if I'm...It does not have to be received within 25 days, they just have to be notified. The date of the notice was the date that was on the letter was within the 25 days. If we are not given the correct mailing address when we send it out, that's not our responsibility to track them down if we don't have a correct mailing address. We send it to the address that they give us, and if they verify that that address is accurate, what more can we do to send out the notification?
I understand. Thank you, that's all I have.
You're welcome.
But I do have a question for Mr. Kopiecheck. What...I mean, this is maybe a little off this, you know, off of what we're talking about a little bit in terms of the notices, but your bar, the Grant Street, what is the percentage of underage...
I don't have the number. I really have no idea.
I mean, on a given night, is it...
I'd have to guess it's probably, it's probably 50% over 21, 50% under.
So maybe about half of...
I would think so.
Okay.
But again, that's just an estimate. I don't have any way to necessarily track it, per se.
So y'all, when you do the armbands, you don't have a particular...
I don't count them. I mean, I guess we can start, but it never became an issue. It wasn't something that we thought we had to do.
Yeah. I was just curious, I mean, you know, the subject of...Carly's gonna have a problem with that. The subject of maybe 21, you know, being the requirements to get into a bar is just always something that we, you know, kinda talk about, and so I was just curious, you know, if that were the case, we might not have had this issue at all, had that been, you know...
Maybe more black and white, that's for sure.
Right. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
I think state law gives the local community the option to have either 18 or 21, but as long as it's 18, they have the lawful right to enter into the premises.
Yeah, that's not...I don't think she's questioning that. She was just trying to figure something out.
But if you pass an ordinance that said there had to be 21...
Right, right. That was where I was going with that. I mean, an individual owner could actually...
That, I'm just saying that would be...
He could do that on his own as well. Like, he could decide his bar was 21 and older.
But also, he would be limiting a significant amount of his customers...
I understand that.
...for other things, other than non-alcohol, music venues, soft drinks, food.
Right.
So that would be cutting his, you know, it'd be losing business.
I understand that. I understand that. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Sally. When someone opens up a bar or asks for a bar license, do they have some type of training? They go through schooling?
No, sir. We do not provide any training for it. If they come in and they meet the qualifications for a permit, pass the background check, which is a 10-year criminal background check, then they are afforded the license, as long as they pay the fees and maintain the permit.
Okay, so whenever they decide to start selling alcohol, there's nothing in place to tell them that besides that, hey, you have to be 21 to purchase it, but it's nothing in place saying, "Well, these are the don'ts, are the do's," and what have you. Just go ahead on and...
We don't do a class specifically for businesses. The class that we currently teach, which is the Responsible Vendor Class, Server Vendor Class, it goes over what the laws of the state are in regards to alcohol sales, and it goes over the local laws. We actually teach the class. The owners of the bars are required to take this class once every four years.
Once every four years?
Yes.
And basically, what you're saying is just what we require as is local?
Correct. It is a state-approved class. This is a class that's also, whenever a person comes in to get their bar card, they get their local bar card. This is also their state bar card. So all of this information is provided in one class. It's a two-hour class that's taught, and we teach this class once per week.
Who issues these citations as far as underage kids or...
The Lafayette Police Department does, as well as ATC, the alcohol, the state agency.
So in this case, was it a mixture, or was it just the ATC or Lafayette Police Department?
No, this was just the Lafayette Police Department on both first and second violation.
I know sometime that we sent out that, hey, certain days of the week or month that they will be doing a surprise check on anyone serving alcohol. Was that provided to the local people that has a bar establishment?
No, we do not inform...I am not involved in when these actual compliance checks are done. I am notified most of the time after the fact.
After the fact.
So I do know of them sometimes in advance, but the majority of the time, it is youth services within the Lafayette Police Department that conducts these operations. And once they conduct these operations, I get the packet of all of the information that was, the citations that was issued, what businesses were checked, and what businesses violated.
So when you receive from the locals that they had some violation, you send it to Mr. Merrick? That's what you did?
Yes, sir. I said, once we got the notification, got the packet in, we reviewed the summonses that were issued, we sent out a notice to him informing him of the date of the violation, the number of violations, what the violation was, what code it violated, and how many patrons were in possession of alcohol on his property. So that information was provided to him in the informal hearing notice that was sent out to him.
You say some, how many was on his property, meaning how many what? Can you repeat?
How many underage persons were in possession of alcohol? Underage, meaning between the age of 18 and 20, between 18 and 21.
Oh, okay, underage like that, because they were under 21.
Right. A minor would be someone under the age of 18.
Did they have any minors in there, under 18?
No, there was no one cited for being in an establishment underage, under 18.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nakken?
Yes, I just wanna say, you know, for Ms. Sally and LCG, I don't fault, I'm not here to fault anybody. I'm here, I'm here on both sides. I think we, in the future, which this is not what we're supposed to be talking about, it's supposed to be talking about one thing, but basically, I'm letting you know that how I vote is not how I look at you or your department, or that you did anything wrong, in my opinion. I just think that, for me, the appellant brings a lot of great points up, and it's, that's not what we're here to talk about, but it's something in the future that I'd like to give Mr. Prescott and just kinda, Esq. out. Sorry. Man, I'm tired, man. Prescott's sound better, though. I'm gonna call you Prescott.
That's all right, Mr. Markin.
Yeah, there you go. Nakken, you can call me Nakken, Naquin, whatever you wanna call me. But anyway, I mean, there's so much going on, and we gotta get to the other side. Both...
I also wanna let you know, my job is to enforce the laws that are on the books.
And that's what I'm saying.
The ordinance is my number one. That's my, I call it my work bible. I follow it to the T. I don't have favoritism, play favoritism for anyone. If they violate anything within that code, I'm going to send a notice of violation, or informal hearing notice out. I'm going to follow it. It doesn't matter what business it is or who it is. I have nothing personal against Merrick. Merrick and I actually get along very well. This is, they're violating the code, and I follow the code to the T of exactly how it's supposed to be done.
Absolutely.
Which is what the ordinance is set for.
And basically, that's what I'm trying to tell you. So I'm not here to fault you or judge what you did. There are some things that were brought up, and it's my opinion. So whatever I render my decision here tonight is not a reflection that you didn't do your job, or that you didn't follow the law to the letter. So I respect you, and just letting you know, depending on how I vote, it's not a reflection of you that. There's some questions I have, and, you know, ultimately, there's eight other people that might feel different than me, but just wanna let you know that for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any blue cards on this matter?
Two.
Other than Colley Salum III and Clayton Burgess, which they have already spoken.
Okay. What they were called up, so I'm gonna give you your five-minute time limit if you would like, if you're in need of it.
I promise I'll try my best not to use it all, but I just wanted to summarize just a little bit of our position. First of all, I do wanna say that, number one, we do not mean to or intend to circumvent or violate the law. We're doing our best to follow the law as it's written. Secondly, Ms. Legge, I think she's a fine public servant, and we're not suggesting in any way that she's done something wrong, or mean, or spiteful, or anything to that nature. That's far from it. As she said, that she gets along well with our client, and I think our client respects her, and we respect her as well. What we're looking at, and we're asking you to focus on this, counsel, is the process. Did she follow the process? That's an open question. It's not as, as Mr. Burgess said earlier, it's not just simply following the protocol of, do you checklist paragraph A, paragraph C, paragraph D? Is it, did you meaningfully apply the law to paragraph A, paragraph B, and paragraph C? And I suggest to you that she didn't. As we've both stated to you, the law is, he should be punished if he allowed or permitted underage drinking. There's nothing in the record that says that, and if she doesn't put something in the record to support that accusation, remember, this is a criminal statute. This is a punitive statute, not a crime in the sense of someone's going to jail, but you're, will be depriving, if you uphold this suspension, you'll be depriving my client of revenue, of being able to operate his business. It will cost him his reputation. These are things that the city will be taking away from him if they agree with this suspension. So there is a higher burden than just simply some kind of personal injury claim or some civil claim. This is a punitive statute. Did she follow the regulations? Did she interpret it properly and use the proper evidentiary processes in place that she has to, just like the police department has to, the courts have to? She is the court in this case. Even though this is an informal hearing, the reason why there's a hearing is to hear the evidence, and to hear our side of the evidence. Because if that's not the case, and there's no reason to have a hearing, and she can just randomly issue the way she wants to issue, I'm not saying that she did anything personal or anything...or anything personal, I can't think of another word, I'm sorry. But the idea is that there is nothing in the record. If you have the record in front of you on this appeal, there's nothing there to show to support a decision that my client permitted or allowed underage drinking. The fact that there is underage drinking is not prohibited by the ordinance. That's not what it says. It doesn't say any type of underage drinking on the premises is prohibited. If you'd written that in the ordinance, then we would have other issues, but it wouldn't be here. The fact of the matter is, that's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance does not make it a crime for someone else to commit a crime on his property or violation on his property. The ordinance is there to prevent him from allowing or permitting somebody else from doing that. And there's nothing in the record that Ms. Legge has provided to you that would allow you to support that decision. So she hasn't complied with her, she hasn't acted reasonably in making her decision, because as stated before, there was no reason to issue, there's nothing, there's no reasons or facts in the record to support her conclusion. And just simply because she makes a conclusion doesn't make it so. I think three or four people have asked her, okay, how many convictions are there? She hasn't been able to say there are any convictions. She only says there are citations issued. It's like asking how many speeding, how many people were caught speeding? Well, you may have issued a speeding ticket, but until there's a radar trap, and you look at the radar, and you go in front of a court, and the police officer says, "I pointed that gun at that car, and that car registered a speeding, over the speed limit," then they haven't, then they have not produced enough evidence to justify that decision. We're asking this tribunal to remove the suspension and the fine from this, from these accusations, and alternatively, to bring it back in so that we can show, prove our case and have the city prove its case.
Next speaker?
Clayton Burgess.
I'll be brief, just to address you real quick, Ms. Ebert. You'd asked about the request. We did make a request. Now, granted, it was after Merrick was already involved in this. Just to let you know, so the public records law, cited very well by Ms. Robelay in the email I got back today, basically says, "Look, if there's a criminal investigation ongoing, right, they don't have to release the body camera, the names, things like that." Why is that important? Because without that, if these minor, excuse me, people under 21 were cited, right, there is a criminal investigation going on. Now, I can't say if there is one or is not going on. My point is, there's an exemption within the public records law that says if there's a criminal investigation going on, essentially, you don't have, the city doesn't have to give us anything. You know, they don't have to give us the body cam, they don't have to give us the names of the people. Now, it's the first time I heard that, and I'm certainly not, I'm certainly not challenging Ms. Legge, that she'll give that up without even knowing if there's a criminal investigation going on. I would suspect if Ms. Robelay was standing beside me, who does a very good job of handing the public records request, she'd say, "Well, we're gonna have to go through these records and figure out if there's a criminal investigation going on, if we're giving up the information that we shouldn't have." She also goes on to say, which is true, that we don't have to give up the body cam either. There's an exemption for that, if there's a criminal investigation going on. My point, my point being, if there is a formal way to get this information, obviously not decided now, it'd be great to let everybody know, because I'm unaware of any way to do it other than a public records request, and I do know that Ms. Robelay is reading back and said, "Look, you've gotta be incident-specific. You've gotta have date, times, persons' names, and then also, we have to go through the exemptions. Can't give it up if there's any criminal action going on, can't give it up if you're not specific enough. The video cameras themselves have a statute that has to be edited out to make sure there's other people, other people that aren't in it that they can release." My point of this whole thing is, it's very difficult for y'all, I totally understand, but some of these things probably need to be thought out a little bit, because it's gonna keep coming up. If there is a formal way, a legal way, to let everybody know before the hearing, for example, many times the DA's say, "We have an open-file procedure," right? Open-file procedure, which means the minute you get your notice, you come look and see what we have, right? That'd be great. I don't think Ms. Robelay would allow you to do that because of the exemptions. My point is, not that everyone's well-intended, but these things have meanings. I mean, they have meanings. Back to the statute real quick, okay? Back to the statute. I think what everyone's struggling with, and maybe this is what Mr. Tatario was looking for, is a substantive interpretation of what those words mean. Permit, allow, you know, and I'm not suggesting that Mr. Esq. can give it to you and not give it to you, but I think that's what everyone is struggling for. Not whether or not Ms. Legge is well-intended, and as Cal says, go through her checklist, and that is an issue, but it's not the real issue. The real issue is, the ordinance that has been written, what is, there's meaning to those words, what is the meat? Right? Like, if we're all sitting here with a really clear Attorney General opinion on what permit or allow goes, it'd be a much easier decision. So that doesn't make your decision any easier, but as a taxpayer, right? I mean, obviously, we wanna try and figure this out, and I'm not suggesting I haven't figured it out, but that's where the holes are. Not just was the procedure followed, but what, you know, what is the meat of what those words mean, and what is the burden that has to be met to meet those words? And all I'm suggesting is, when it comes to him, if you're gonna lose a license, there has to be some substance, and there has to be something. You know, the appeal from here is we go to the district court, and we'll be able to tell a judge, which, rather than not do that and cost everybody a bunch of money, and say, "Well, Judge, we had a whole hearing, and no names were given, no times were given, we don't have the citations, we don't have anything, how can it be reasonable?" Now, I understand it's a difficult decision. All I'm trying to get at is, as this goes forward, because there's other citations, my understanding that essentially now, the officers, and this is what the letter says too, are giving violations for possession. And that's not what the statute is, but that's what it's become practically. We're writing tickets for possession of minors, but that's not how it relates to him. So I think there's basically been a watering down of the process, and it's just kind of, no one challenges it, and it's just become, "Hey, man, if you're 18 and you got alcohol, the guy's in trouble." And it's not because anybody's ill-intended, it's just practically what's happened. And I can tell you that there's a bunch of other bar owners that wanna know what's gonna happen, because they're saying, "Look, this is a standard that no one can meet. It's not possession, it's allow or permit." So that's all I have, and I do appreciate your time, I know we've been long, so...
Mr. Castillo?
That was the last speaker?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
Thank you.
I think that's what she said, yes.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make sure I'm correct. Make a motion to accept the findings of the Office of Alcohol in Noah's Control. Is that correct?
Well, actually, you can make it even cleaner than that, or simpler than that. And the decision before the council is whether to grant the appeal or deny the appeal on the first violation.
Correct.
And so, as a result, if you vote yes, that would be granting the appeal of the appellant's. If you vote no, that would deny the appeal and uphold the director's decision. And so there's no need to make a motion to adopt. In other words, the appeal has started, and it's before the council, and all that needs to be done is the chairman needs to call for a vote.
So a yes and a no. A yes to give the appeal, and no is against the $500?
A yes. Yes grants the appeal and dismisses the first violation. No vote denies the appeal and upholds the original decision of the director.
Okay, then we just vote then.
Is that your motion, Mr. Castillo?
Yes. I'll go with Mr. Prescott.
Madam Clerk, you could call the vote accordingly.
This is, and for clarity, clarification, this vote is on the first appeal of the first violation.
District four?
No.
District six?
No.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
No.
District nine?
No.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
No.
District three?
Yes.
Motion has been denied.
Okay, so Sally gave us all the information in one packet, so right now on the floor, we're considering the second appeal, which involves the suspension.
Okay, I sense a trend.
Yeah, that's crazy. But, so, you find it necessary for Sally to present again, or are we going based on the information that was given?
I mean, I know, I think she gave you the synopsis of the circumstances at the beginning.
And, for the abundance of caution and being proper, we're gonna honor the blue cards for the second part of this as well, 'cause everything was spoken to as it relates to the first issue?
True.
Yeah, okay. So, we're gonna go with the blue, right, right. So, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna allow the appellant to be heard on the second issue members, and then we're gonna honor the blue cards on the second issue, as it relates, but that'll be the extent of the discussion. A lot was said in the first discussion that crossed over and carried both, and the reason that was allowed, Mr. Esq. alluded to staying within the scope, but again, when Sally made her initial presentation, she was able to give everything related to the entire thing, so I felt it was appropriate for the appellant's to be able to address it in their own way. In the second phase, what we're gonna do, we're gonna let the appellant, he could speak on his own, or he could designate someone to speak on the appeal, and then we'll honor the blue cards, and then we're gonna make our considerations at that point. So, with that said, Sally is not, is not necessary for her to speak, so the appellant could speak, as far as the second issue.
Nothing further for me?
We're not gonna rehash everything we've talked about before, but basically, we would re-argue the same things over with you. On the second phase of the appeal regarding a suspension, as I understand it, the first phase was on the fine only, if I'm understanding that correctly.
That is correct, yes.
So on the suspension, my understanding is, the, is the purpose of the suspension is because this is the second offense. And we wanna make sure that the, the council understands that he was notified of both offenses at the same time, so in a punitive sense, he didn't know he even had one offense, much less two offenses. And he was served with both of the notices at the same time, and appeared in the hearing, in the informal hearing at the same time. So in that regard, you would be punishing him for a sin that he didn't know he even committed, by doing, for a double sin. So we're asking you to evaluate it from that perspective, from a procedural point of view, that this is not, as far as he was understanding, this was not two separate matters, but this was basically considered to be one. There was no way to mount a second defense on the same day without even knowing he was having a first offense. So, again, we reiterate the fact that the, of the 25 days notice, that he was not allowed, certainly of the earlier offense, he wasn't given 25 days, and the later offense, the 25 days is just as critical, if not more critical, because he couldn't defend the second situation better than he could defend the first at that point. So, without belaboring the point, I, I want the council to understand that, by punishing him, depriving him of the five days, he's losing revenue, employees quit, customers will stop coming by. Five days is not a whole lot of time to most of us, but five days is a lot of time to him. That's during a period of time when he's, he only makes revenue two days a week, and those two days are incorporated in that five days. So he's being punished pretty severely by a suspension. He's already been fined, and, and I think, in the terms of a lesson learned, we're doing our best to resolve that lesson. And I do wanna bring this one thing up. In our hearing that we had, I, once the, once it was clear that Ms. Legge was going to rule the way she ended up ruling, I asked personally, "What can we do not to come here again?" I could not get an answer. And it's not because she refused to give me an answer, it's because there was no answer. She brought up things like, "Well, you need to have, you need to have security, we have security, you need to get police officers, we had police officers, you need to ban, we had banned it, you need to have your people walk through the, walk through the premises, we have people walking through the premises." And yet, we still have no way of curing whatever, whatever these issues are, that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So we're, we're not thumbing our nose at the law, we're not thumbing our nose at the spirit of law, much less the letter of the law. We're trying to comply. The problem is, is that I don't think we'll be able to comply in a perfect world, because there is no perfect world. An 18-year-old is gonna sneak in a drink, an 18-year-old is gonna go into the bathroom and get a drink, a can of beer from his buddy that's 21-years-old, and go back outside. And there's no way for us to know without being unreasonably invasive to the, to the, to the people, exactly when and where anything happens. And as the strict interpretation of, as Ms. Legge said, by her strict interpretation, if an underage drinker grabs a drink off the table and we stop them, that one second that underage drinker has that in his hand, they're in violation of, of the ordinance, and we are too, even though we're literally trying to stop that person at that point. So we're not trying to subvert the law, we're not trying to, to pull one against the council. We want the council to understand that we're not deserving of being punished, we're not deserving of being shut down. We're trying to do our best, and we'll continue to do our best, and we'll continue to find ways to do things so we don't have to come back here again. But in the meantime, let us continue on with our business, and let us continue to go forward and with the, with our, with the processes that we have available to us to move forward.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna consider that the, the appellant's position, now we're gonna go to blue cards and, wanna call the name just for the record?
The blue cards?
Yeah.
Colley Salum III and Clayton Burgess.
Right, so. I won't say anymore, no.
I'll defer to Clayton. I'll try not to be redundant, but I just want everybody to understand what kind of slippery slope we're on, okay? The old ordinance at least gave you 25 days to have a hearing, the new one gets rid of that. Literally, an officer in one weekend can shut down an entire business. If they're able to withhold the violations and have all the hearings at one time, they go one violation, two violations, three violations, liquor license gone. And that's, that's where you're at. If, you know, the idea that, that he can get cited, and then, look, it's not intentional, right? But then, weeks later, he gets cited, he has no knowledge he's been cited, he doesn't receive any notice of the citation, and then you show up at something like this, where, I mean, just by the very idea that we're taking two appeals, look, one more ticket and we'd be voting on his license. It's, it's, it's literally become, especially now that the police officers are just doing the possession, and if that's what the council continues to vote on, that, "Look, man, I can show up and put you out of business one Friday night. I can go Friday, Saturday, Thursday, you're done. You don't have time for a hearing, you've received three or four violations, no names are issued, nothing's done, and we would show up for an appeal, and you'd be like, all right, first one fine, second one suspension, third one license, done." And so, you know, there's gotta be some type of, you know, staggering process where, you know, that's the whole purpose of the first violation or second violation. Look, it's almost akin to a guy stopping you for the DWI, he writes the violation, then he lets you drive down another block, writes you a second one, lets you go home, writes you a third on the same night, and you're like, "Okay, you're done." So, you know, without any kind of staggering, without any kind of notice to lump them all into one hearing, under the old law it violated the 25, it's, you know, literally, officers could go out this weekend and put everyone out of business if they wanted to. If you interpret it as just possession, and there's no need to stagger the offenses, and there's no need to stagger any hearings, and in one night, the city council can go from first offense to license gone, and I know we're not at that point, but that's, that's literally where we're at. It's, it's just way too easy for, to put these guys out of business like that. And, look, I, I wanna reiterate this, we have, and I would, had we even known what supposedly we'd done, I would've brought the guys. We've got two guys with affidavits saying they're walking the floor challenging people, right? Like, "Is that a Coke? No, not it's a Coke." And the guy literally tells me, that works for him, I don't know what to do now. When I catch him and bring him outside, we get a possession. When I stick my fingers in their drink to challenge them, right, they threaten to sue me, it's, it's become an impossible burden, man. I mean, we're literally, we have affidavits of people working on saying, we're literally getting cited when we bust people on our premises and start walking them out the door. So my, my only point is, you know, it's, it's just, it really comes down to whether or not you want anybody to do that kind of business. What's fair to the business owner? I mean, he shows up, yeah, he hired us right away, he's not trying to dodge anything, you got one offense, two offense, same hearings, we're going fine, we're going suspension. You know, it's, it's like, "Look, man, you give the guy a chance to breathe a little bit." I mean, he's hiring the off-duty officers, he's got people walking the floor, they're literally challenging people holding drinks. But we all know, if it's a Coke or bourbon a Coke, you're not gonna know till you smell it or take it away from a guy's hand, and that's what they're doing. So, you know, to, to suspend it, you know, I, I mean, it's almost becoming, like Cal said, it's almost becoming impossible to defend. If it's gonna be just possession, and we can stack the offenses all at one hearing, I mean, look, I, I told him, what am I telling you? I said, "Look, man, if they, if they, if they all agree they can stack offenses, all do it at one hearing, everybody will be out of this."
I don't, I don't think anyone is stacking offenses. I think we've all acknowledged tonight that there was some mail issues. I don't have addresses in front of me, like you haven't received certain things, this council hasn't received certain things.
Certainly.
But what I don't wanna do, as you mentioned, the slippery slope, is start going into an area that we're gonna polish it off by saying, "We know the person is a good person," but then imply that intent was done. There were some bad addresses on applications evidently, there seems to be the wrong location where, where notices arrived, notices were received, hearings was had, but the idea that this council is supporting, or the department intentionally stacked some things and could lead to the, to the dismissals of license, and I don't think we've gotten to that.
Just so we're on the same page, Mr. Burgess, I'm not suggesting anybody's doing it intentionally, okay? My, but my suggestion, because it happened, is simply that through errors, if, if it's allowed for all the hearings to take place on one day, and then all the punishments to take, for multiple offenses to take place at one council meeting, right, there's no chance for the guy to, I'm using the word "stack," but not intentionally.
It's kinda like the cat conversation earlier, it shouldn't happen. If, with proper addresses and proper notifications, the date, the, the issues would have been separate.
Mr. Burgess, can I be totally honest with you? After about 30 minutes of cat conversation, I went outside and sipped a little water and watched it on TV. Because, because I, I knew things were getting a little heated over there with that. I, I, you guys are, you guys are earning your money clearly, okay? I would never say that you're not, because that was, you know, clearly, there were a lot of people interested in that, and I saw, but I don't want anybody to suggest that it's happening intentionally. I'm just saying, you know, if, if multiple offenses are heard, first, second, third, whatever, in one hearing, and then you're forced to defend all of them in one appeal, certainly it could be a problem. So all, all I'm suggesting is that, I think, you know, we're here in good faith, I can tell you right now, we're, we're interviewing the floor people. We're, we're, you ask about education, you know, I'm telling them, "Look, man," and they're asking me, "How far can I go? Can I rip it out of their hand?" You know, that's what we're trying to do. To suspend him, I think, would be extremely punitive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, so, Mr. Esq., I take the opportunity to explain again, the vote is actually the same process, but just for the record and so everybody could be clear, what a no vote and a yes vote are representing in this instance? Well, I guess, I apologize, I'm jumping the gun, I guess someone needs to motion if, in fact, they wanna move to, to accept or deny, so I apologize.
That's not necessary. You, you have heard from both sides the appeal, and...
Sorry.
It, it's not necessary. As, as a process of the appeal, you've heard from both sides, and now it's, the issue is before you to vote on. And a yes vote would grant the appeal, and a no vote would deny the appeal and uphold the director's decision.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, call the vote, please.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
No.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
No.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
No.
District three?
Yes.
The question has been approved.
All right.
Appeal.
Now, we're gonna move to announcements and vacancies on boards and commissions. Liz, please read item number 26.
Due to expiration, a vacancy will exist on the Lafayette Public Trust Financing Authority for a five-year term effective October 8, 2017. Individuals wishing to submit a resume for the above volunteer vacancy must be a registered voter and a resident of Lafayette Parish. Yearly ethics trainings for all employees is required, as is financial disclosure under certain circumstances. Resumes are to be forwarded to Veronica L. Williams, Clerk of the Council, P.O. Box 4017-C, Lafayette, Louisiana 70502, or emailed to BCLafayette@LafayetteLA.gov no later than noon Tuesday, August 22nd, with appointments to be made on September 5th, 2017.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're gonna consider appointments by the council as a whole to boards and commissions. Liz, could you please read item number 27?
Appointment to the Industrial Development Board for two years and six months, the remainder of an unexpired six-year term.
Okay. There were four resumes received, and actually, there's been a request by one of the submitters to be heard by the council, because he did not have an opportunity to be interviewed or questioned. So before we take nominations, we're gonna now call up nominee Ramon John, and I apologize if I mispronounced the last name, Fonseca, 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 Fonseca Jr., Ramon John, was that last name?
That was perfect.
That was perfect?
Fonseca.
Fonseca, okay.
Mister Chairman, council members, Mister Mayor President, just thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. I understand that there was a vacancy for the Industrial Development Board. I submitted a resume and just wanted to express my desire to serve, much as like you, you do. My family and I have a wonderful life here in Lafayette, we're raising very small children. I feel qualified to contribute to the community on this board, and I understand there are a lot of other service boards also, so certainly, if there's other persons more qualified, please go with that, but I feel that I would be a strong advocate of the development here in Lafayette. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. We're gonna now open the floor for nominations at this time. First, we have Ms. Hebert. Hold. Did you wanna nominate someone?
I did. I had to get a...
You need to hit your button.
Sorry, I had to get an opinion from Mr. Meskot.
Prescott?
It's Meskot.
Meskot.
Sorry. I'm gonna remove myself.
Okay. Mr. Castillo, nomination?
I'd like to nominate, it's Alyssa Davis.
Davis has been nominated. Ms. Cook?
Yes, I'd like to nominate, Mr. Fonseca.
Mr. Fonseca has been nominated. Seeing no other nominations, we will close the nominations, so we'll do a, a name vote, Davis or Fonseca, when your number is called. Madam Clerk?
District six?
Davis.
District seven?
Fonseca.
District eight?
District nine.
District one?
District two.
District three?
District four.
Davis.
Eliza Davis has, Elisa Davis has been appointed.
Now, we will move to appointments by council members, mayor, president, and/or any other direct appointing authority. Please read them, read item number 28 and 29.
District one, Kevin Nakken appoints Paul Champagne to the Lafayette Parish Waterworks District North for a four-year term effective on November 1st, 2017. The Lafayette Police Department appoints Paul Mouton to the Lafayette Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term effective July 26, 2017.
Now, we will move to introductory ordinances. Again, I'll entertain a motion in a second, okay? Motion by Kunk, second by Castillo. Liz, would you do the honors?
Ordinance 154, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute the attached agreement between the United States Department of Justice, Drug Enforcement Administration, and the Lafayette Police Department, and amending the fiscal year 1718 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $18,042 received from the DEA and appropriated within the Lafayette Police Department. Ordinance 155, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $104,241 from Capitol Works orders within the Fire Department and appropriating to bunker gear for additional funding needed. Ordinance 156, 2017. The Lafayette Police Department appoints Paul Mouton to the Lafayette Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term effective July 26, 2017.
Now, we'll move to introductory ordinances. Again, I'll entertain a motion in a second, okay? Motion by Kunk, second by Castillo. Liz, would you do the honors?
Ordinance 154, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute the attached agreement between the United States Department of Justice, Drug Enforcement Administration, and the Lafayette Police Department, and amending the fiscal year 1718 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $18,042 received from the DEA and appropriated within the Lafayette Police Department. Ordinance 155, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $104,241 from capital works orders within the Fire Department and appropriating to bunker gear for additional funding needed. Ordinance 156, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operations and maintenance and capital improvements program budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the Utilities Department. Ordinance 157, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government for authorizing the transfer of $195,000 in home investment partnership funds within the Community Development Department from contracts, construction costs, to Lafayette Habitat for Humanity. Ordinance 158, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the filing of an application with the Louisiana Housing Corporation for a grant under the 2017-19 Emergency Solutions Grants Program. Ordinance 159, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government for authorizing the transfer of $149,500 in home investment partnerships funds within the Community Development Department to the Housing Loan Program. Ordinance 160, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government for authorizing the receipt of $17,500 in Strategies to Empower People funds from the Louisiana Workforce Commission through St. Landry Parish Government Local Workforce Development Board Number 40, for a three-year month period, and appropriating revenues within the Community Development Department Workforce Development Division budget. Ordinance 161, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council declaring the building or structure located at 113 Bacaet Street, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Marcus Johnson, Caro J. L. Block, attorney-appointed, to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare in order in the condemnation of same. Ordinance 162, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council approving a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of a bed and breakfast into the existing main house in an RS-1 residential single-family zoning district, case number ZON 2017-24, 338 North Sterling Street, conditional use permit located generally on the corner east of North Sterling and south of Mud Avenue. Ordinance 163, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify the property of K. Door, case number ZON 2017-25, 6400 block of Johnston Street rezoning, located generally east of Johnston Street, south of Bellevue Plantation Road, and north of Camino Real Road, from CM Commercial Mix to CH Commercial Heavy.
All right. Any council discussion on any of these items? Seeing none or any blue cards on any of these items? Please call the roll.
District seven? District eight?
Yes.
District nine? District one? District two?
Yes.
District three? District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
Motion is approved for in global.
All right. There was a lot of talk tonight about cats and liquor and alcohol, but tomorrow is the first day of school in Lafayette Parish, so we want to wish all of our students who are returning to the school system on tomorrow the very, very best of luck. Those who are listening via AOC or streaming live, we ask that you remember, school zones will be in effect, we ask that you honor school zones and be extremely cautious, as we will have a lot of buses and delivery of our children to and from school, so we just wish the children well, and ask for extreme caution and safety as you drive the roads. Meeting is adjourned. Doing fine, how you doing? Okay?